The order and welcome everybody to the library. Board of trustees, city of Daly City, today's November sixteen. And the meeting will call to order at six oh six, is that correct? Six oh two, six oh two. I forgot I set myself for minutes a little bit earlier. Okay, welcome everyone, okay. So we're going to do the pledge of allegiance. Ready, go. Pledge allegiance to the flag of United States. For which stands one nation under God. Can I have roll call please?
President Faupou.
Present.
Trustee Dos.
Present.
Trustee Santos.
Present.
Okay. Thank you Kayla. Okay, I'd like to. Approval of agenda.
I motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
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 Motion carries, thank you. Okay, and then approval of minutes.
I motion.
A second.
All in favor? Aye.
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 Okay, so that's the approval of the minutes, I'm sorry for September twenty twenty first, wow. September, October. We were on vacation for a long, a blackout for a long time. Okay, um now turn the time for presentations please.
So as requested, um I have brought um two of our public policies um for review. Um we've um discussed it with the the library managers and suggested some um revisions to it, so in your packet you will have found the very first um version um that's marked draft is is the new version. And then behind that you'll find the the existing version. And then if there's any other things that go with it, so the first one um is the computer device and internet use policy, and I have a a li- a little um. I'll share my screen. I have a a little presentation that kind of goes over the um the changes. Kind of give you, can you? See my screen?
I can, I can see half of it Shayla, I don't know if if it's the same.
It's the same for me too, I can only see half.
There we go, it looks good.
Okay, well we'll look at it like that, not in the presentation mode then. There's not much to it, um but this is just um to kind of explain the process that we went through. So currently there are two separate policies for um computers and for the internet and they um initiated, we initiated these policies, well they predate me actually. When we first got um all the computers way back when um they came from like Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation. And they had the big CRT monitors and it was very shiny and new. And they've been revised over the years. Um but what we are proposing is to consolidate internet and computer policy into just one policy, because it it's um it simplifies it and and it allows us to better highlight the relevant rules that would relate to the use of both things simultaneously. And also to more generally cover all of the newest technology devices and ways that people access the internet. Um so that that was the goal with creating a a single unified policy. So the the existing policy just references, as I said, the computers um and the internet. And so um currently we we offer um we have some tablets and for use in the library, we um check out mobile hotspots, we have wireless printing for example. And we've recently added in um a laptop kiosk at our John Daly Library. Thank you to the Daly City Public Library Associates for their generous grant um for that, so we wanted something that would encompass the things that that we currently have, but also have that flexibility. The um the current policy also itemizes a lot of very specific prohibitions as we tend to do um and detailed time limits. Um and so um we wanted to really um simplify that like because this ended focus on the the key rule and the and the reasons behind the rule and give some flexibility for things that um that may change over time, for instance, time limits, um we had to adjust the time limits during the pandemic, because we reduced the number of computers available and we wanted to ensure equitable access. So to have that flexibility built in there, to adjust things like procedures and and time limits. And um and then finally, um I added a section for safety cautions. Um the existing policy does go into quite a bit of detail about obscene material. Um but there are, as we know, other hazards out there, and so um the what we wanted to do was add a separate section that addressed cybersecurity um liability issues, especially as they relate to user own devices, because that wasn't a thing back in the day. And um and also the safety of children to really emphasize the importance of supervising them when they're using the computers um and devices and accessing the internet, so those were, those were the changes. Um you can see, as I said, the draft is in your packet and um the existing policies are behind that. Um there's also included in your packet for information purposes only, a copy of the PLS WiFi um policy, and that's something that that PLS um has created, of course. Are there any questions about that that policy?
No, thank you, I like how it's very simplified and condensed in just the one versus the um so the modification fits perfectly fine, thank you. Just one question, it's not about the policy, but about the computers that the libraries have. Which libraries um are the computers up to date? Or are they they need maintenance or do they need new computers?
So we we replaced the temp lines, but we've replaced the computers relatively recently. Um we, again, we got, we got some funding through um the Daly City Public Libraries Associates as well as um for this the city. And um so we had replaced them relatively recently, we we tried to do them all at once so that that um the user experience is more seamless, if it, because we know we do have a lot of pictures that go from library to library. And so they all have the same model for for public use um for for the lab computers. And then the the laptops and the kiosks at Daly, those are of course um brand new as well.
Thank you.
Okay question Shayla, um I know that the language, some of the language around the specificity as you mentioned was changed. I mean, I kind of see the change around like the computers can only be used for designated purposes. Is that laid out for folks somewhere? Um like what? Like is it like on the, attached on the computer or is there something that um that that just says like, here's what, here's essentially?
So so when you um log in, so we we use um a timing and print management software on our our public computers, the lab computers. And so when you log in using your library, um your library card number and your PIN, um there is a policy to accept, it's it's fairly long, so I don't know that everyone we don't all read them when we accept the policies. Um there's also, when you um when you attach to our public WiFi, you you have the policy, the PLS policy for use of the WiFi will come up and you have to accept that each and every time.
Cool. That's cool, I mean, I'm sure people need to see it a couple of times anyway.
Yeah, and as is the case, I think with with most of our policies often, well, the public facing ones. Um a huge portion of the use is just, you know, if if there is a problematic behavior, you know, we can say this, we're not picking on you, this is the policy and it's very clear and they they know that it's being fairly fairly addressed. And we, you know, having, everyone having an opportunity to, you know, correct the behavior rather than being kicked out is is obviously the goal and unless it's something egregious.
Okay. Do we need to cover the three D printer policy?
Yeah, um so I guess um in the in the past, I I believe that the library board has um endorsed the policy, so I think if if you wanted to take it action, I think I believe that would be the action.
Okay, um director's report.
So would you like me to go over those changes to the three D printer policy now then?
Yeah, so we can cover those, so on number three and four.
Okay.
Please.
So a- again, um you can see my s- my screen?
Yeah, you're right.
Excellent, okay, another one, short and sweet, so the three D printer policy was actually a much um more recent policy. It was created when we first got our very first three D printer, which again, I sense a theme was um purchased with a generous grant from the Daly City Public Library Associates um back when we were entering into um just dipping our toes into maker um technology and maker programs. Um and so since then, um we have expanded that um that service. And um so now we have, actually, we have a three D printer at um each of our four li- library locations. Um and they are different models, so um you know, there are differences between them, and so again, we went back and we wanted to make the policy more general and focus on um guidelines for using the service rather than the specific procedures, so again, we we attempted to streamline it and make it more generally applicable um to all of the different types of three D printers we have now and any three D printers we might have in the future, so there was a whole section on how to email us, and we took that out. Um the other thing that we removed was um when we didn't know what the future held, and so there was a section uh describing the three D printer as a pilot project, um it was a successful pilot project, so now it's just a project. And um and that stating that there there may be a fee for for um use in the future. We eliminated that section, we we found that um that the way that the the three D printers are being used, the cost of implementing a fee would really um counterbalance the benefit that that educational purposes and making it available to everyone equi- equitably, so we eliminated the fee section, the um there is a obviously consumable product when somebody does have something three D printed, but you know, it's the material comes on a spool and it's a, it's a um fairly affordable material. You always find the affordable version of it, so we've eliminated that. And then we added um some information on limitations, and this was another thing that we've we've just learned over the years of having them. And we had had some specifics about, you know, limiting by amount of filament and things like that, but because we have the different models and they um operate differently, uh we wanted to just be more general. Um we we did find that that there are some very avid and enthusiastic users that that maybe are less thoughtful about the requests, so we we wanted to limit to um one print request per week, and we found that that meets most people's needs. Um and also, you know, prevents people from from monopolizing everything. And then we wanted to take out anything about a time limit or a filament limit or anything like that, since it didn't apply to all the devices. Those were the changes that we proposed, again, with the effort at simplifying it and really focusing on the the policy, the guidelines for using it.
Do we accept a huge um order of request? Like if it's a project from a group or organization or a school or a class? Do we accept it can be, can be, can it be removed from the property and if a school wants to borrow it, can it be removed and placed there for the order or it cannot go anywhere?
Cur- currently they, I mean, I've I've brought them occasionally to outreach, um but they're they're not super mobile items, and so we've not done that, I mean, if if um a school wanted to partner or another kind of organization wanted to partner with us, we could certainly explore the possibilities for that, I mean, they can, they can be moved, they're just not super portable. One thing with the three D printing is it is um it takes a long time with really any of the models we have to to complete a print, so it it's it's something that's, you know, better to to do maybe one on one individually, but I I know lots of schools do have them in there. So they have found ways to to use them for education purposes.
Thank you Kayla.
I don't have any questions, I do appreciate the, I definitely see the intentionality and and I like that there's some kind of accountability between the patrons and and the library staff. Um, because I think I was there when when you all had printed one of the one of the little stands and it took a long time. So I I hope, I hope that kind of resolved some of the like folks who maybe are not picking up the items, and I, from what I know too, the the materials are expensive, is that right? Like a little bit pricey or not?
Terribly pricey, I mean, it's not cheap, but it, no, you, and you get a whole spool and um to it you'll, depending obviously on the size of the the project that you're printing, but also um there's other settings you can adjust. Um often it's a, you know, there's a little period of negotiation with the patron to try and figure out what would meet their need with that, we're not, you know, have something printing for eighteen hours while we're closed, you know. So trying to to adjust the the project so that it fits within the, just, you know, the limits of what we can do as a public library.
Okay. Moving on to library hours.
So um we are, we are moving along with our process, um and I'm very happy to report that um our restored positions um are um soon to be new hires are all in the pre-employment process, going through the, you know, the HR process for for coming on board. We, they all have different start dates and one of them is um is not going to be able to start until January, so um we're anticipating we want to give some time for, you know, to get people on board, to get um some training completed, so we're anticipating being able to extend the hours later in the month of January or possibly early in February. We're very excited.
Until that's across all the branches to expand hours?
And so, for, that'll be for Bayshore and John Daly, sorry. So they will be, they will be having their hours rest for the five, a full five days a week, so that um people can visit us when they expect to be able to to come visit our library. They they've had really um limited hours for for quite some time and very exciting to be able to do this.
That's really good to hear.
Many thanks to everyone who voted for the.
At least we still have two empty seats on the board of trustees, but those are fulfilled, that's even better. So thank you, thank you for that. Okay. Um now we're moving on to trustees' report. Ladies, do you have anything to report?
Not for me, um and I'm sure, um I don't know Victoria if you're sharing today, but I do want to just celebrate the the book sale. That happened for a couple of weekends, um I had to volunteer for one of them, I unfortunately didn't get a chance to do the following weekend, but it was really fun, I did my own shopping, I definitely think we should all send our people to the book sale that time. Um but yeah, great job DCPLA, I hope you all got to raise some good money soon with libraries.
I mean, I think we may have all volunteered on different days.
Yeah, I want to echo that, it was a good experience to like touch all the books and like organize it. And it was just nice to see a space where um, you know, community members can one, like set it up together, but also like um just enjoy books that they love, so I appreciate you all for organizing that.
Okay, for my end, I wanted to thank Victoria and Nada, well, thank you for the for the book um sale, but um before that, it was the Daly City youth poet laureate who came there and volunteer her time on a Saturday to read out a poem amongst a lot of the Bayshore community and a lot of community members that were there. It was such a phenomenal event, and so thank you, so um I noticed that um a lot of the audience over there were not paying attention too much to her reading, so maybe we need to bring out more of that, you know, to our our community, our seniors, our you know, the teenagers, the youth, how do we get them more involved? So thank you Victoria again for for that, I know it's past month, but still want to thank you. I have a suggestion, a suggestion about the book sale. I saw something on Facebook, it's this outdoor, it was an outdoor library, you know, with the COVID. And so they set up these shelves of book and it was almost like a pop up in the evening and they have tables sit out, you know, people were, you know people were getting tea and pastries and just sit down and got a book from the these big outdoor bookshelves, so I was like, ooh, maybe we can do that one day, you know, we can collaborate together and do that to one day. Um nothing much to report from my s- from my end. Just looking forward to fill up our seats, our trustee seats and may- maybe Steven, Mr. Steven here will have good news for us to celebrate the holidays with, but if not, that's fine too. We'll just be patient and wait patiently. Thank you. So now we're going to move up to board vacancies, that just covered that one too, so Mr. Steven.
I, I'm sorry, I don't have that good news you're looking for tonight, but the um Shayla and her team has been posting to social media about the vacancies to encourage more applications in the meantime, so you noticed that online.
Thank you, okay, so this is good, it's going fast. Um number six, report from Daly City Public Library Associates, Victoria.
Thank you so much for having me and um thanks for your thanks. Uh the book sale, you know, we raised a little bit of funds, but I think much more valuable is just like you were talking about the community involvement, we had several librarians come, some library aides come and um, you know, to volunteer. We had uh Justine and and Lauren both came and volunteered along with our board members and we had a lot of high school volunteers with our Daly City youth poet laureate and my daughter who worked together um on the committee to invite high school students, so that that was really great too, because I got to meet some high schoolers that I didn't already know and they appreciated the community service hours. But you know, just even having, you know, like Mayor Manalo came in to visit and Supervisor Canapa and Councilmember Di Giovanni, I mean, just just having friends and family and community people come in and and hang out was was just so so much more valuable in my opinion than even the money that we raised. So it it was all around successful and I'm looking forward to doing another one in a couple years, but um so you may have noticed that Amy Hayes is here today, she is one of our DCPLA Board of Directors. She's our CFO and um she just came in to check out the meeting and, you know, kind of say hi to everybody. But we just had our retreat last weekend and we actually decided at that point that we would like to have the board become a little more involved with the trustees by taking turns coming to these meetings, so instead of seeing my face every month, you will see a lovely rotation of board members, just so that you can get a little more familiar with them, because I I know I'm kind of like the face of DCPLA in a lot of ways, but you know, I'm I'm not running this thing by myself, I've got a whole Board of Directors and a lot of them are are co- community members that you already know, so we're just trying to get them a little bit more out there and in contact with everyone, so I I will be um letting Shayla know who to expect each month, but I hope that you all, you know, be happy to to welcome them, and I know they'll be happy to meet you and our new trustees when we get them. So um the last thing I just wanted to share with you is that at the city council meeting on November twenty second, we uh our board member Teresa Proaño will be presenting a grant of five thousand two hundred and twenty to the city of Daly City for um US state books to update the collection. And that money is passed along from the town of Colma who gave us the grant for that. So that's that's exciting, that's our last grant of this year, I think, probably, unless something comes in last minute. But the super exciting thing about that is that it it pushes the the amount of grants, the dollar amount of grants that DCPLA has given to the city of Daly City since our inception in twenty eleven over the three hundred thousand mark. So we're really excited about that, that's a, you know, that's a monumental achievement and we're just so happy that we've been able to provide this funding, just just hearing Shayla talking about these you know, these things and and mentioning DCPLA gave us this and that, you know, things that predated me, it just, it makes me really just happy that we're able to to provide this extra service to our community and um we appreciate the library trustees. And of course Shayla and Steven and everyone who, you know, we all work together to do this for our community. So thank you so much and next um meeting, you'll get to meet somebody new, I think.
Thank you Victoria and welcome Annie.
Thanks for letting me join, it's interesting.
Wow, um that amount keeps on growing, Victoria. Um totally, I'm still a new kid on the block, so um still learning and finding out. Still learning and finding out how much you have contributed from your. Side and, you know, it takes a village to raise this, so. I totally appreciate from the bottom of my heart. Okay. Um and looking forward to to meeting new members from your board as well. Um now announcements and communications. Anybody with any announcements?
I have one announcement to share. Um this week is United Against Hate Week in the Bay Area. And um Daily City has been participating in in this effort for a number of years now. Um and. Chela will be displaying our Daily City Stands United Against Hate branded posters at the libraries. Um the Recreation Division is also participating as well. We're doing a poster giveaway for any interested. Uh residents and we're also distributing the posters to businesses as well. So you might see them around town if any of you would like one. Um you can pick one up at City Hall, just call the city manager's office or just get in touch with me and and we'll make sure that we can set aside posters for you.
Thank you. I saw that poster today, Mayor um Manalo was bringing it to the rip and cutting of the. Uh the Chick-fil-A.
Yeah.
Yes, today. So I saw that. Thank you. I might want one or a couple. Thank you so much. Ms Dos, Ms Santos, any announcements?
I have an announcement, but I will say the answer, Steven, is yes. I would please like a poster. Um I think I'm still sitting, I'm still really excited about the expansion of the hours for John Daly and Bayshore. Um. I think on the communication end, I know that we're more so looking at those hours to be early. Early in twenty twenty-two and I'm curious. I think, because I'm also thinking, I mean, I'm imagining like this would be a really good time for us to do like the advocacy thing, the advocacy part of our. Of our roles, I think, and get people to go to those libraries kind of anticipating. The expansion of hours. Um so I am curious, like, are there any, like, ho- like, what's going on for the holidays? Are there like kind of holiday offerings, particularly for like Bayshore and John Daly that we can send patrons to? To just get excited about those libraries expanding hours um in the meantime. But I think that could be like a commitment for us um as we close out the year.
With for for Bayshore on December eighteen, that's a Saturday, it's uh the Christmas giveaway. That is hosted by the Pacific Islands together. So um if we have a flyer, then Jayla by then introducing the hours. I'm more than welcome to stuff them in those bags.
Oh, I love that idea, Teresa. Um yeah, I love that.
So that will be good. So they open up the prisons and then, hey. Now, welcome to the new hours, twenty of the twenty-two. So I can do that on my end for for Bayshore.
Yeah, and I think for John Daly too, my my partner's um like business is is kind of down the street. So I think some flyers too for hours there and I'd be happy to, like when I'm walking down or something, um hand them to patrons nearby. So we can get something from John Daly too. Um I can try to see who can take them, hand them out.
Yeah, we can definitely do that. Thank you. Ms Dos?
No announcements for me.
Okay, I guess tho- those are the announcements and communications agenda building for next meeting. I I want to say we continue to put the board vacancies there. And then, um.
Theresa, um if I may interject, the December meeting for the library board is generally uh canceled because it's so late in the month. Um but I wanted to put on all of your radars that January would be your vote for your reorg. So the new new president, et cetera, so um.
Okay. Sounds good.
But we can still build that agenda during this meeting.
Right, okay. Um anything else, ladies? And then uh maybe uh advocating more for. For the patrons for the new hours. Putting out there, I know that uh Bayshore Community Center had a last minute um request. For um a library card for their club. And uh Mister Cole Johnson was really um. Came through for last minute and it just guided us through the whole thing, the whole process. And thank you. Jala for uh even checking back with us when returning from your vacation. So, you know, I felt like. You know, when um sometimes when things wanted that we wanted it to and we don't know who to go to. You know, and then the communication somehow it's sloppy or or. Somewhere cracked in the middle. But when I received that phone call. I called Jayla, I sent her an email and then the next person that was there. Took over and called me. So I appreciate the fact that the staff were able to act accordingly and. Returning my phone call and were able to help those children to get a library card through the Boys and Girls Club. So. Kudos to you and your staff, Ms Jala. So please convey my my sincere thanksgiving to them.
I will.
Okay, um I guess if we have anything else, ladies, that we need and then. We have a whole month of December, we can just email you, Jayla, if that's okay? And I, okay, and I don't think we need to touch any more policies. Until we're, you know, until. We do our own individual studies and research on the policies and see if you have anything that stands out. We can immediately email uh Chela. Okay, any public comment?
There do not appear to be any members of the public present.
Okay, then the meeting is adjourned. Um I wish you guys all a happy Thanksgiving, happy Turkey Day or. Whatever suits your appetite mood of the day. Wish you well, stay safe and have a good one.
Thank you.
Take care.